Alex Ringkamp and he said I'd, he said I just made, I just made some. I think John Eda will open the meeting for us.
Yes, I will. We're going to open our meeting at CK Elementary or LSIC meeting.
Four, four P M.
Four P M. Ms. Hall will be in a minute's late.
It's that, and same thing with Mr. Ashworth. He's on the way to.
And Mr. Ashworth. And so we'll stand the state of the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna turn the mic to you. No camera, just mic.
Okay, that's great. Well, I want to welcome everyone tonight to our LSIC meeting. I'm going to introduce our staff to you as we bring them up to speak to you. With their list in here, but as we bring them up, I'll introduce them at that point. The first thing I want to talk to you about is enrollment report for school, including the blended of virtual numbers. We are currently around 628 students. We're very transient based on location and some other things. So we go up and down with that number, but we're currently at 628. And we do not have any virtual students. The next thing I want to report out to you is our data from the summative from last spring. The numbers you can see down the page are growth, student growth. So that's exciting to see. First of all, all the highlighted areas, but we're going to just point out a few specifics. We'll start with the summative, third grade E L A. They were three points higher than the state, fourth grade E L A. They were 15 above the state, 10 above district. Fifth grade E L A, we were 11 above the state and 10 above the district. And I believe that she might, I put an H on there because our fifth grade teachers, they were either first or second in the county last year in all three areas we departmentalized. So we're very proud of that. So third grade math, one point above the state. Fourth grade math, seven above the state, fourth above the district. Fifth grade math was in double digits on both, 26 above the state and 22 above the district. We're very proud of those scores. Science, very proud of these as well. She had very high science scores, not above the state and eight above the district. So again, we celebrated that. The next thing I want to share with you is on that test, we had 56 students that scored exceed standards in E L A. Eighty-three that scored exceed standards in math and 14 that had exceed standards in science, which would have been fifth grade only. Now for the star that we took this school year from fall to winter. One thing I want to point out is there was double-digit growth in all grade levels. So 17 points for second, 14 third, 12 points for fourth, and fifth grade was 10 points. The average overall at winter benchmark was 14 points growth in E L A. So for math, we were nine points in growth for second, 14 for third, eight for fourth, 15 for fifth, and 12 points overall. So anytime we have double-digit growth, we're very excited. One thing down at the bottom is the C A C I, is the state benchmark. And we were double digits in all of that. So I thought that was very exciting. So I wanted to share that with you. Okay, let's go over. Okay, we're good. On the second page, after analyzing the winter data, we set a goal of 65% for school-wide growth because we know that on the star, they want to hit 60% as proficiency. So our summit of targets for this year are 52.35 in E L A and 45 in math. So we are announcing and celebrating most growth on all star assessments from September to December and also those that moved to green and exited out of intervention. So we try to celebrate both of those because that's exciting. We'll give you some intervention data here in just a few minutes. We also recognize growth at the end of each six weeks. Number three was to report on intervention practices, including number of tier two and tier three students. We current, last year we had four intervention teachers. We had two part-time and two full-time. This year we only have two part-time. So that kind of lowered the numbers that we could assist on students there. So these numbers look a little bit different than last year, but that's based on staff. We currently have a total of 71 students in tier two and tier three. Last year we serviced 124, but that was with two full-time interventionists as well. As a first semester, 32 students have tested out of intervention. So we thought that was pretty exciting. Last year there were 48 at this point. So with two part-time, we still tested out 32 students into the, into master. We have two part-time reading interventionists this year. We currently have 59 students waiting on the reading list, meaning they could utilize intervention if we had slots and time. ECATs are providing some of those supports as expected. We also, and we're going to talk to you a little bit about this later, is math intervention. We have 93 students that could utilize math intervention as well. I want to mention just Vex Robotics really quick. They're actually in Vex right now, so they couldn't come and present. They have students right now, but we have four Vex Robotics teams with Tara Lockhart and Brittany Moore leading them. Sixteen students participated, 11 boys and five girls, and we have hosted three competitions this year at CKES. So the next thing we want to present to you is the report on social emotional learning and student mental health. And I want to introduce Ms. Webb to you, our school counselor, Mary Malarki, school-based therapist. Is she here? Yeah, she's over there. There she is. There's Mary. So we're very fortunate to have Mary. We want to thank you for providing that for us this year. They're going to go over that with you.
Hopefully you can hear me. I'm not afraid of being too loud.
I'm louder than her. We even configured this in much better.
Yes, we have. So I thought this quote by Stephen Covey was very fitting because beginning with the end in mind, that's a lot of what a good school counseling program should do. Like, I do feel like this is the only preventative mental health care that a lot of times people were ever exposed to. Oftentimes I'll be working with a little person who's got a big emotion and I think to myself, man, this is the kind of stuff that literally keeps people out of jail later when they master these skills. I mean, it does. And it impacts their learning too. So I'm the school counselor here, Ellen Webb, and.
I'm Mary Malarki. So I'm actually contracted through Prestera. I do a lot of the tier three, well, all of the tier three here. But we'll get more into that and like what that scopes out and the difference between our jobs. And so I think it's always important when we're talking about mental health to just talk about adverse childhood experiences. It's called ACEs. It's an assessment that has about 10 questions on it. Talks about things that kids are exposed to up to the age of 18 years old.
They've got a PowerPoint down here. I don't mean to interrupt, but they're also.
And ACEs, the higher number that kids score on this exam, it, it makes it.
A way we can measure their trauma, like how much trauma do you have, unfortunately?
So later impacts like health, like the physical change in your health when you're older. You're, it can increase heart disease and diabetes and can be more apt to have a stroke. You're four times more likely to have depression when you're exposed to these adverse childhood experiences. So I put like a little clip in here to kind of give you more of an understanding of what it is and how important it is to us.
Experiences called ACEs are stressful or dramatic experiences that occur in childhood, violence, abuse, growing up in a family, substance use, or mental health problems. When a caring adult or supportive environment doesn't soften those adverse experiences or when they are ongoing or overwhelming, they can lead to a prolonged activation of our stress response called toxic stress. Figured toxic stress like this, our bodies were designed to escape predators quickly. Imagine you're walking through the woods and you see a bear. Your brain signals your body to release stress hormones like adrenaline. Your body prepares to either fight or run from a bear, and that's useful if you're in the forest and there's a bear. And how can this change your three threats to your physical and emotional safety? And this system is activated over and over and over again. What was meant to protect you begins to do the opposite and becomes damaging to your health, creating a long-lasting worry around your body and brain. Children are especially vulnerable to the effects of ACEs and toxic stress because their brains and bodies are slow developing. The toxic stress from ACEs and other adversities such as poverty, racism, discrimination, and natural disasters can disrupt the normal functioning of vital bodily systems. Simply put, toxic stress can result in long-term mental and physical health conditions. Not only that, the effects of ACEs can be passed from parent to child for generations through the biological changes and behaviors associated with ACEs and toxic stress. A person with four or more ACEs is twice as likely to suffer from heart disease, cancer, and stroke. Four times as likely to develop depression and 12 times as likely to attempt suicide. The good news is that safe, stable relationships and environments and other interventions such as physical and mental health support can reduce the risk of ACEs leading to toxic stress and stress-related health conditions. To learn more, visit W W W dot O S G B dot C A I.
So that is a glimpse at what ACEs is. And it, it literally changes your body's response to things. So like your fear, your heart rate becomes shallow, your breathing becomes shallow, your muscle tension. And you're having to do all these things when in response to stress that you might not even be exposed to the stress that triggered that response. And going to a school as big as this one and, you know, just being exposed to other relationships and people around us. We don't know how to interact with other people. So a lot of the things that we do is like the emotional regulation and all that is like it's essential and vital for kids to understand like how important it is to be able to deal with those things appropriately. Because we look at kids a lot of the time, and I can never talk about trauma without saying, you know, like it's not what's wrong with that kid or, you know, what it is, it's what happened to them. And I try to always keep that in mind. It's kind of like a trauma in foster care that's involved in my brain. Because it is, it's always what happened to them. Like, nobody wants to act out. Nobody wants to have those kinds of behaviors.
And what is that behavior communicating? What, what need does that child have to be okay, to be back to ACEs? But some of our kids unfortunately live in a state of toxic stress and it's a lot more than what I'm comfortable with, honestly.
It's a lot. And I don't know how she's done it all these years by herself, being by her side and doing it. It's been a lot. I step in and help where when I can, and it's helpful and I think we work really well together. But I'm not always able to, you know, provide my services because I happen to meet one-on-one with kids. But she does a great job of what she does. So nationally, 63% or 9% of U S adults have experienced at least one ACE with 17.3% experiencing four or more. According to the United Health Foundation, West Virginia is ranked 44 out of the 50 states with the highest value of ACE scores. I think that speaks volumes because the things that on that list of the assessment is things that no kid should have to endure.
Like abuse, having a disability, discrimination, domestic violence in your home.
Incarceration, not being with the parent, parent separation, things of that sort. So it's things that we don't always typically look at when we look at a kid's behavior that I think is vital and is really important.
So here you can just see like our needs are growing. Every year I do a needs assessment or have made that a part of my practice within the last few years because it's been very helpful in helping me get a glance at our big population. And there's a question on there. I go in the classrooms. This is part of my usual first lesson that I do with them. And it's, I use like a Google Outlook form. So I can export everything into Excel, which helps me look at it and see where the needs are very quickly. But there's a question, do you need to see the school counselor about something? Is there something going on that you feel you need to talk about? And even from last year, that, that rose from 77 kids asking for a one-on-one to 113. And then you can see there the severity that they, they perceived their issue to be. And some of it ranges from, I'm upset with my friend or somebody yelled at me on the way to school to I don't have food or someone's getting beat up at home. But, you know, to a kid, any issue can be a big deal. And some of them, they're normal, unfortunately, shouldn't be normal. Here's just a glimpse of kind of what's been going on in our school. And you can see there like kind of the number of sessions is, is growing. This is just during my time at CK. First year I was split between two schools, so I wasn't here as much. And that, that's probably part of the reason why those sessions are lower. But last year we, I saw 153 individual students and it spanned 472 sessions. This year I'm already at 148 such individuals as of the 25th of February, spanning 355 sessions. I often feel like I can't get through everybody that's needing something. And I'm depending on teachers to help me triage and.
I got referrals weekly. I should have kids weekly that I've been getting referrals over the last like month.
And then we have non-C P S referrals this year. I think three threat assessments and that's just using our county form to determine is this really a threat or might we do any cast it on or not. And then four suicide risk triage assessments. This has surprised me. The amount of kids that have suicidal ideation in elementary school and so far. It's, it's really surprised me and it's made me really sad that that's.
Something we have to address at such a young age.
Our kids' reality. And then here's just some of that in a different, a different way for you to look at it. The gray represents the student scene and the per-grade level, if you need a breakdown like that. And then gray is the amount of sessions or times that I've pulled them. Now my work is more school counseling. We're supposed to be solution-focused brief. We're not trained to have kids in our office for like an hour. Sometimes it has to be that way because that's what the kid needs. And well, you can see the modalities that I can pull from. I do a lot, I try my best to stick to solution-focused brief, but sometimes people need different things. So I may pull from cognitive behavior, looking at how you're thinking, how your thoughts affect your feelings. What, what feeling are you having? Why are you having that feeling? What do we need to do to get you to a better feeling? Emotionally focused, reality, grief, a lot of grief counseling, unfortunately, different things. Yard diversity affirming behavior intervention, that's become a big thing here, probably across our country. But as more people are getting diagnosed with A D H D, autism, we need a lot more help with social skills and practicing how we stand up for ourselves, how we communicate. Lots of crisis response, executive functioning strategies. Like some kids, I had a kid today who was upset because he, he like had trouble not learning. And like he knows, he knows that. We're helping you be comfortable managing your, your load. And how do we manage, Tom? What systems, you may have a deficit here, but what systems can I teach you to put in place to help with that?
One of the ones I deal with a lot is empathy and teaching kids empathy. You would be surprised in the number of kids that do not feel empathy at all because they're not exposed to that at home. And you know, like it's, some things are not always taught early on. So that's something that we're having to learn later if we're having to teach them. I think that's essential too. So this is me, this is what I do. I'm a part of the E S M H grant, which is Expanded School Mental Health Grant. It's a grant that's funded by the state. It's also funded by West Virginia D H H R and the Aware Federal Grant. I'm not sure how familiar you guys are with that. But what I do, I'm here and I'm at Pritchard and I also do outpatient at Wayne County. And Truck Court. So I'm here three days out of the week, Wednesday through Friday typically. And I do a one-on-one services. So the E S M H grant is a tier one, tier two, and tier three services. So she provides the tier one and tier two. I do the tier two and the tier three. So the tier, tier one is promotion and prevention. It's for all students. So the tier two is the at-risk students, early intervention. That's where I pull. A lot of the lunch bunch groups that we do, we spend roughly two hours a day doing lunch bunch. Sometimes it's one, sometimes it's two, but most of the time. But during lunch bunch, it's a time where we're teaching new skills and we're asking, you know, like things that are, what are hard? You know, what's going on? Asking about their day. And some of the things that these kids learned out. So as she's talking, I kind of like do a little sad thing, you know, like I'll sit down and I get a lot of my referrals doing that.
They self-refer.
They self-refer. Like, can you phone my mom and see if I can talk to you, you know? Because I would love to meet with all these kids, but because of my job and commitments, other commitments, I'm not able to sit down and do it unless they're on my schedule and I have that parental consent. That's not to say that I don't, you know, engage with her. If she's overloaded and has a couple of students, like I'll grab them and talk to them too.
She has to do insurance unless it's like a crisis response kind of thing.
And I have to do the intakes for the kids that I receive for referrals myself. So the tier one's her. We both do the tier two. And then the tier three is the therapy. That's the one-on-one that I do with the kids that are set on my schedule every week. There's only one kid that I have that lives with mom and dad out of my whole caseload. And I think that that speaks volumes. Majority of them are with grandparents or other members of their family. And I think that that just goes without saying how hard these kids' lives really are. They, it's, it's not, you don't have to have the grant in order to be a part of E S M H. It's a model that is used and you do have to have parental consent. I do telehealth services as well. So even through the summer, I will still be meeting with these kids regularly for the parents that will allow me to. Probably maybe if she'll let me do it here at the school in the summer. Otherwise I'll be at the Prestera offices or we're allowed to meet at the parks or playgrounds or, you know, whatever's convenient for the parent, I'm willing to work with them on doing. So they don't have that gap at the summer and we can continue to build our relationship and rapport and, you know, help them where they need to be helped. But those intensive interventions for those high-risk kids, it's so important.
My ones that want an hour or I'm not getting, even 30 minutes is a lot in a school counseling day if you're teaching lessons. Like my ones that need more and I know I try to get them to go to her, but not always will parents agree to that. Even if it's what their kid needs. This is like just kind of an image of our lunch. This is like just kind of an image of our lunch bunch participation. They also kind of during our needs assessment at the beginning of the year, they, they let me know if they want to do this or not. And it's become a thing, they all really enjoy it. We do check in with them, but we're also doing work. Like we have to attend to some work and, and the work that we're doing is more rooted in cognitive behavioral therapy. Like what thoughts are we having? If they're negative, how is that serving you? How can we shift that? And we're using a program called Positive Actions this year that Prestara has provided for us. They seem to like it and there you can see, I, I'm really happy with the amount of kids, the percentage of participation that we have.
I get so excited. Like we walk in that door at lunchtime and they literally all come running to us like, are we going today? Are we going today?
And if you're not in there, they're checking the, because I have lunch duty, they are checking.
I'll be walking down, like I'll be walking down, I'm like, is it my day today? Like I don't know, check the door.
This is also like friendships too.
Yeah.
It gives us some to pull it forward too.
And it gives them a way to like realize that they connect with other students in a way that they wouldn't talk about in the classroom.
Because they're sharing, they share their pit, their low point and they share their peak, their high point, that appears in our lunch bunch room. So we've, we have lamped a storage area and made it as best as we could and it's, it's.
It works.
Nice now, but it's convenient.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, and then here, this is more my tier one. I feel like, to be honest with you, our kids could use a lot more. I'm lucky if I get in everywhere once a month, I try to do as much as I can. But there you can just kind of see, like I have six kindergarten classes and I try to remember to pull in all the special ed that, that aren't in the two rooms that I physically go in. And it, it takes a while to just get through everyone and give them what they need. This year I'm used to good for drugs, thankful to have that program and Bradley, Jordan and Sean have helped get me referrals on that, which I greatly appreciate. Because you know, copying at a school this size can be an issue. The copier is always in high demand. I try to make sure my lessons are in alignment with the American School Counseling Association and West Virginia Department of Ed's Student Success Standards. It's one thing, to be very honest with you, and this is kind of why I put Roosevelt in the background. It's not uncommon for me to be in the middle of teaching and my phone ring. Usually it happens at least once a day and somebody's like, hey, this kid's crying, can you come help? And I'm like, well, I'm kind of in the middle of a lesson with twenty kids right now. And then I'll try to coordinate while I'm in the middle of teaching. So that's kind of, that's kind of sometimes a thing. But everybody here does work really well together. Ms. Trader, all of our principals will come and show up.
Yeah, she, they played a big part in it too. There's one kid on my caseload that we had a meeting with and he's improved draft, so we've moved to Trader and Ms. Farley that they included me in on their meeting. So that we could all work together to get him on track because he wasn't doing so great there for a little while.
The collaboration is great and the communication between our staff, I feel like that's wonderful and it's rare.
It is very rare. I've worked in this field since two thousand sixteen, so not super long, but I've been in a lot of schools. And I've seen a lot of kids and the way that this administration works together with one another and communicates, it's like no other. It really is. Ms. Farley, she's constantly, constantly on it, like everything. She doesn't wait, she doesn't prolong things, if something needs done, it gets done. Same with Caitlin, she's been great. I love that I'm next to her so that we can.
Our offices are rough side each other.
It helps so much because we're able to use each other's supplies, you know.
Or if somebody is crying and I am somewhere or maybe our.
Someone comes looking for and I'm like, you know, I can help you.
Even though she does, she's not getting a bill for that with her job, but she will and I appreciate that. Because it's, it is needed. But with that being said, I do feel like I barely get to scratch the surface and I do feel like school counseling lessons, social emotional lessons, they're not getting this any other place most of the time. It is important, it does impact their learning. Being able to regulate your emotions does impact your focus. Like these are all skills that every adult needs to be successful, that they get to learn in, in school counseling.
If you wait till later in life, it makes it a lot harder for them because then they go to get their first job and they're not able to take instruction from their boss or if they put out on a customer, they're really upset.
I've done two jobs for five years, so I love, I love it here in doing this or I wouldn't still be doing two jobs. But my other job, I do therapy. And I can tell you, it's very similar, sometimes the adults that I work with, sometimes they're on a lower level emotionally than the kids because they didn't have this. They weren't raised knowing how to pay attention to this kind of stuff. If data's a, admin's love language, classroom guidance is going to mean potatoes if I'm interested in counseling. I really feel that way. That's where we, we make those changes. When I have to do body safety, we start body safety next week. That's always a lesson that is hard, it's always hard. Hard at me, dread it, but I also know that it's so important, it's law, it's law for a reason. Every single year I have multiple kids come forward and share that something like that has happened to them or is currently happening.
I feel like change occurs more, it's more likely to occur at the age of like elementary school, school kids. Because I've worked a lot with teenagers and one thing I know is once they get in that brain of, this is who I am, this is what I've been taught. Those core beliefs are embedded in them from childhood. And it's really hard to adapt and change at that point. So nailing it like before they get to that middle school level and understanding like this is a part of my growth and this is the things that are really important and are going to allow me to be successful. It, it can change their whole trajectory, their lives, literally. Like if it were re modeled, they've done scans where the brain, the physical brain changes when trauma occurs. If you scan somebody that's healthy and you scan somebody with a lot of adverse childhood experiences, the brain looks completely different. So that goes without saying, these things, it takes baby steps.
The Body Keeps the Score is a good book for confirmation on that. And then here you can just see some ratios, like the American School Counselor Association recommends two fifty to one counselor. In twenty-three, twenty-four, the national average was three seventy-six to one. During twenty-three, twenty-four, our state had an average of three oh nine to one. And then according to Zoom in our county, the average currently, this is amongst all of our schools is two fifty-nine to one. And then here right now, we're six twenty-seven to one. So we'd gladly take more help if, if that ever becomes a possibility and I hate to even say that during rip season, but it, it is needed. Because I do often feel like I'm dropping the ball and I, I try not to, I try to triage people, but everybody's not getting their needs met because I can't get it all done in one day. Just very bluntly telling you that. Thank you and here's a link if you need more information. I appreciate your guys' time.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I did.
Oh, yeah, thank you. We appreciate both of you and the information and the job that you do. Okay, at this time, Ms. Vanna is going to go over attendance data and attendance interventions.
Good evening. I'm in charge of the student's attendance and I put it in the computer, talked to it. The first six weeks, we had an attendance rate of ninety-four point seven and I was really excited. We also had two hundred and fifty-five students on the first six weeks that had perfect attendance at that time. Great. Second six weeks, we went down just a tad, which wasn't too bad. We hit ninety-four point three, two twenty-six with perfect attendance. And then the third six weeks, we said, flu A, flu B, COVID trip and all the great things came. We still were at ninety-three and we only had a hundred and fifty-two. But we had thirty-eight students that are in perfect attendance for the first semester, so I was really happy with that. As the weather was getting warmer, we were going to let them go out on the, the garden area, I mean the court area out here. And I'm going to have ice cream with them when the weather gets warmer. I'm sorry. With the data that we have up here, we've decided that we're going to try to set a goal for the four, six weeks to have a ninety-five percent attendance rate for this, for the four, six weeks. And by the end of the year, we'd like to have a ninety-six percent. On February twenty-fifth, our chronically absent percentage was only fourteen point six percent, which was really good because the campus absent, chronically absent was twenty-four point three nine. So we were really below them, so I was really happy about that. We'd gone down some too at that time. Now, this is something, this is a saying that I put on my door because I really believe this. There is a direct correlation between regular school attendance and student achievement. We're committed to establishing early habits for regular school attendance and students by laying the groundwork for their ongoing and future success. Setting goals is essential for the students to be made aware of how important we think attendance is at our school. And I want their parents to know that as well because when you're working with little kids, a lot of times attendance is not their, it's not all just up to them, their parents after you make aware of it also. So as we, as I just said, we use the, the data from up at the top to set the goals. But every day, like I'm going to be, I call the parents daily when the kids are out. And I tell the parents, I'll say, I want to call and check on your child and see how they're doing. If they're sick, give them a hug, tell them I missed them. We want them back at school and I want to make a connection with that parent and let them know that I love their kid. I tell the kids every single day, I love them, I want to see them back at school and I want to make that connection with the parents. And the parents really say they appreciate you calling me, calling and checking on the kids. So I hope that helps. Angie's doing some meetings that are helping great too. Celebrating attendance is a critical part of our success. When she started PBIS, we included attendance in that as well. And for a while we did, for the last year in this part of the year, we would have attendance meetings and we would give them a badge and we would take pictures and they were doing great. I know the last one we had, Mrs. West class, highest we've ever had, had a ninety-nine point three attendance rate for the month of January. She only had three students without perfect attendance that month. It was great, they did wonderful. Ms. Cole's class was second with ninety-seven point three and no one had below a ninety-two point six, so I was really proud of them. But we decided that, we all got together and talked about it and we decided to mix things up the last part of the year. So in February, we said, and we're going to do a dance for all the kids with perfect attendance. We had a dance during their PD time and all the kids with perfect attendance during their PD time, they got to have a dance and they loved that, didn't they? Last, last, last Friday, I think they got to do a dance on their, no, not Friday morning, on Thursday. They got to have a dance for their perfect attendance. And now in March, we're going to do March Madness like basketball for their tardies, but we're just going to concentrate on the tardiness. We don't want them to have any tardies. So every morning I'm going to give Ms. Farley a list of the, of the classrooms that had no tardies for the day before. I already got the list ready for in the morning. And we're going to keep track and the kids that have no tardies for the month of February, get to go over and shoot hoops and play basketball on the last day of the month. We're going to try to do something with maybe behavior and attendance on the last month of April and have something to do with an egg night. So we're trying to mix it up and let them have some games with the two as well. So anything that we can do with attendance to celebrate it and make it happy and make them know that we want to celebrate attendance and have them here because it means a lot for them to be at school. We have a bulletin board out in the hallway and see when you go out, it's CKES is the place to be. And every month I try to put a picture of the students that were there every day. And for the month, we, when we give them their brag tag, we take their pictures. And the bees on there say, we want them to be here every day, we want them to be on time, we want them to be ready. So this, this bulletin board just goes over what we want for them every day. And I love to put their pictures up on the board, they like to come by and see. So I love attendance and I love the kids, I like to see them here every day and we're trying to get them here every day. Thank you.
Okay, at this time. Ms. Trader is going to talk about the, another attendance intervention. And discipline report on the number of out-of-school suspensions and positive behavioral supports being utilized at school. And Ms. Franklin will jump in in a minute, our special ed teacher and SAT leader and give you a couple of dates, updates on SAT.
Hello. This year, as you probably know, the attendance director has instructed all the schools to have SAT meetings for people who are struggling with attendance. Our attendance really isn't that bad here, but our punctuality is. So we have a lot of kids that just drag in tardy and I mean, some of them will have four kids in the car and then that's four different classrooms that's disrupted and, and it's a, it's, well, it's a lot of kids. We have a lot of kids and if they're coming in late, it's just a big disruption, not only to their learning, but to everybody else in their class. So we've been combing through our attendance data to locate students who have less than ninety percent attendance. So we are doing those meetings with those people, but also we're looking at tardies as well. So when I say some students are late eventually, I'm not talking eight o'clock, sometimes it's nine-thirty or ten. And I don't think sometimes parents understand what they're like, I don't know if they think they're just hollering until their kid gets there. I don't know. But that's the importance of our SAT meetings. And I was really nervous about doing this, but it, they have been, we've only had one parent who was confrontational. And found, we found out she drives by two other schools to get here, so get your kid here on time. But anyway, one parent we, we had a meeting with and one of, she's got two daughters and one of them had, really has a document, like we have the documentation that she has a medical issue. She, she really can't sit in line. Our drop-off line is long, but we are out here at six fifty-five, so they've got, and there are gaps in it. So there are plenty of opportunities to get these kids here on time. They all want to come in on two wheels at seven thirty-five is what happens. So with this, with this family, you know, since she did have a medical, you know, we have the medical documentation, we gave her permission to park at the Wonderdome and walk her girls in. That has helped a lot. It's, it's not to where I want it to be, but it is, you know, it is getting better. We had, we've had some other people who I really don't think that, I think it's one of those things, you get what you allow. And so when we're, when we're pulling the parent in here to talk to them, they're like, oh, you know. And when we have the teacher in, in the SAT meetings and our communities and schools liaison, she, she goes above and beyond offering help. One student, it was a breakfast issue and he was like, she said, can you bring him in here on time? He can come right to my office and get breakfast. I mean, we have breakfast here, but sometimes it's just an excuse and we have, we have options for those. And when we get the parents in these meetings with the teacher and they say, look, Mrs. Schumaker, first grade, one of her, one of her meetings that she was in, she said, look, I teach phonics at this time. And if they're not there, they missed a whole phonics lesson. I can't go back and teach it again because I've got to teach all these other kids everything else. And you know, they, when they see, okay, you know, that's a big deal, they're, if they're not coming in at eight-thirty, they missed all of their reading. So that's what, that's what we're doing in these meetings, they're non-confrontational. We, you know, we bring them in usually, sometimes they're nervous and I'll say, listen, we're just here to help. We're here to help you find a, or you know, a, what am I trying to say? Solution. What can we do to help you get your kid here on time? Because it's important and we want them to know it's important and not, you know, not just so Terry Lynn Queen looks and says you, you guys are doing a great job. But because these kids who are here late every day are, they're missing something and they can't get that time back, so it's important. So we've had, like I said, our meetings are non-confrontational. We, we, you know, we, we are very nice and we, we come up with solutions with them. Sometimes they'll say, you know, it's my fault and I'm sorry and I'll do better. And you know, it is the parent's fault because these kids are driving themselves to school. So far we've had initial SAT, attendance SAT meetings of twenty-two students, of parents of twenty-two students. These nine were scheduled up for follow-up meetings because they did not comply with the plan. I've been scheduling meetings yesterday and today. I've been scheduling meetings yesterday and today. We've got ten more in the works, initial, initial SATs for attendance and punctuality. We are, when I say we're very non-confrontational, if we have a follow-up meeting, my back bone gets a little stiffer. I told a teacher today, my back bones get stiffer every day. Let me go ahead with PBIS. PBIS, this is the third year for us, we're still trying to get there. We have added an educator's handbook, I don't know if you guys are familiar, but I had the teacher print off a, print off on one student, this is the data we can get, behavior data when we're looking at this. So this is one student and I took the name out, but this one student, you can see, it's this sheet right here, had five referrals and we can see, you know, what the actions were. We had a restorative conference twice, redirection once. This student had, did have one out-of-school suspension. It tells you the time of, you know, what days of the week, what time of day. So if it's somebody that's getting in trouble at the same time every day, we can kind of see what's going on at that time. The next page, it tells you, this kid's all over the place, but it tells you where it happened, what the offenses were, who the employee was that, that put the diet in, educator's handbook. And then the last two pages is written documentation. So we could look and say, who did this, or who put this student referral in and their documentation, exactly what happened. And so when we go, if we have a student who needs an FBA, for example, a functional behavior assessment, we've got all kinds of, we can just, I can just print it off my computer right now and see what we've already done with the student. As far as out-of-school suspensions this year, I forgot to write it down, but I believe it was five different students and no, no more than two consecutive days for any of those. And a couple of those students were students with IVs who we just needed to come up with a better plan when they come back. So, you know, we're not trying to suspend kids. We don't put every single thing we do with behavior in weevus because they're still babies. We do put the suspensions in there because that needs to be documented. Okay, that's all I have.
That is good too, because like you didn't do awards.
Oh, I brought that. We can also, we had an extra for this, but if, if a, if a teacher wants to, you know, send a message to the office that this kid needs a shout-out, they could put that in there too. And so I try to print those off every day and, at least every week, and we give them a shout-out over the intercom, so it's good.
Thank you, Ms. Trader. Okay, Ms. Franklin, if you want to share some SAT.
Yeah.
They should have a copy of that as well. The SAT, yours is colored, it looks like, has the boxes on it.
Gotcha.
So I'm the SAT leader, one of them. So I just wanted to present you with some data. I also am a teacher, so at the beginning of the year, we had seventy-three students in SAT. Roughly about thirty minutes per SAT meeting. So that is thirty-six and a half hours I am out of the classroom at the beginning of the year to do SAT meetings. I feel that this is a lot of time away from my kids. I feel like it does affect their test scores because we are such a large school. We have, I mean, we probably need more kids in SAT, just like we have more kids that could benefit from intervention. But, so we started with seventy-three. Five students were exited from SAT because their behavior or academics improved. Six students qualified for special education. Three students moved out of our school. Twelve students were referred and qualified for a 504 plan. Five of those SAT students were gifted referrals. So right now, we have forty-two students in SAT, so that equals about twenty-one hours. And we have to have these meetings every forty-five days. So as soon as I get through the whole list of SAT, I'm starting to get for the next review meeting. So at the bottom, it says, has to be held every forty-five school days. When I have a SAT, someone refers them, I have to have that within ten school days. So I try to schedule my SATs on Fridays, so that's the only day I'm out of the week. It has maybe happened twice this school year because if I get a new referral, I have to have it within ten school days. So I am out of the classroom at least one and a half to three hours every single week to do SATs. So that is one and a half to three hours that I am not giving instruction or co-teaching. So then, I'm also spending a lot of time, on the next page, you know, making the SAT schedule, filling out notices, making copies, filling out the paper, sending alerts, reminders, preparing the meeting work. Then if they get referred to 504 or special education, I'm making copies of that, giving those to the appropriate people. It's just a lot of, a lot of time. The next one is for the 504, that's not me, but 504, we have thirty-six students currently on a 504 with one waiting for their initial. So that's approximately between twenty-seven to thirty-six hours a school year. So that's at least one hour a week so far. The 504 coordinator is out of the classroom, not getting instruction because she has to have the 504 meetings. So it's, I feel like with such a big school, we could really benefit if we had a position that was SAT 504. And then when they're not doing SAT or 504, we have a lot of students that need reading intervention and a lot of students that could benefit from math. So I just want, you all don't have a copy of this because I'll just show, like this is my schedule of how much I'm out of the classroom. Every block is when I'm out. So this is September, this is October. So you see, it's not just on Fridays like I originally wanted. November, December, this one's February. So the SAT leader is, you know, I get that we have to have it and we have, you know, but I just really think that it, we could really benefit if it was an actual own position with a SAT 504 because our kids are benefiting from the SAT, but then the SAT coordinator, you know, we're out of the classroom so much that it is, it's, it's affecting our students, it's affecting behavior because I'm not in there to co-teach or pull kids who need extra help. So I just wanted to present all of this. And we're only losing five fifth graders. So next year, we will still be at this, plus all of the kinder, new kindergartners that will be referred next year. So, and that schedule is not, that's just, someone else does fourth and fifth grade SATs, so that's just kindergarten through third. Somebody else has, there's ten fourth and fifth graders, so she's pulled out of the classroom to do those SAT meetings every single, every forty-five days. So I just wanted to give you guys a little bit of data about the need for, I don't know how, what the solution is, but we need to come up with some sort of solution on how to balance it out. Because it's a lot, a lot, a lot of work. And I love doing it. I love doing the paperwork and helping the students and all that, but I'm also missing out time with my students. So I just wanted to give you guys a little bit of that data. Thank you, Ms. Franklin. Okay, next, we have our PTO, next year's president coming up, Ms. Hodge, and she would like to share just a little bit with you on what PTO has accomplished this year.
Hi, how are you guys doing?
Good, how are you?
I'm good. I am Sarah Hodge, I am one of the vice presidents of the PTO right now. And I just wanted to go over some things that we have done for the school and for the kids this year so far. And I would also like to say that we have a very motivated group on the PTO this year and we work hard to do as much as we can for the kids and are always looking for new ideas. Some of the things that we have done this year, we did grandparents' day. Grandparents' day is when the school invites the grandparents to come down and either have lunch or breakfast with their grandkids. And we also have this classic book fair going on at that time. And then after they shop, they go out and get pictures made. Our secretary, Rachel Perry, made three, took three hundred and sixty-four pictures, printed them off and gave them all to the students. We do a Halloween, the school has a Halloween parade and the students and staff dress up, walk down Beach Street and around to Route sixty Burger King over here and back to the school and we provide three bags of candy for them. We also have a Christmas movie that we do every year in the Wonderdome and we provide snacks such as popcorn or cookies. Our upcoming events are, we have field day, we do field day out here in the field and our PTO members help with those along with many volunteers that we can get. We provide t-shirts for the fifth grade graduation and of course, we have to pay for sex and phonics, which this year is only thirteen thousand dollars. In order to, in order for us to have these events, we have to fundraise. Our fundraisers this year so far have been, we did, at our open house, we sold t-shirts and decals and we made about twenty-five hundred dollars off of that. We've had two classic book fairs and the total of those were eight thousand three hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And we had same as workshop, we made three thousand and seventy-two dollars off of that. And we have bi-weekly snack sales and through January so far, we've made one thousand sixty-six dollars. And so right now, our total is around fourteen thousand one hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Thank you all so much, I appreciate everything you all have done for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hodge. And when she said sex and phonics is only thirteen thousand, that's because last year they started a new series, it was twenty thousand, and they raised every bit of that but just a few dollars for us. So I can't brag enough on our PTO and these ladies up here that help my job, or make my job a lot easier every day, so I appreciate everybody here and of course, you all as well. I just want to go over a couple of highlights. I'm not going to read those to you. I know you all have another meeting next, but there are a couple of things I wanted to point out to you. If you'll go to the last page there, just a couple of concerns I wanted to talk to you about. And I know some of them are already being addressed, but I just kind of wanted to share some information with you. We do know that extra classrooms are still needed and I know that project is ongoing, but we are still, you know, in that need. We did, we were able to put a special ed classroom where we had one of the pre-K that is no longer available, so that has been very helpful. And we have a full special ed classroom in there this year, so that was awesome, so thank you for however that was worked out. This is something that goes with the data that Ms. Franklin presented from SAT. We have, and we've given you all the data on this, so I don't know if, I mean, if one person could do this position or whatever, you know, you could possibly consider, but we could certainly use some more intervention, we could certainly use, you know, a part-time SAT person. So if somehow those positions were combined, if they could do intervention, SAT and 504, with a school this size, it's a lot. They do everything that's asked of and these meetings are always on time, there's never out of compliance. So, you know, they make it work, but it's a lot with a school this size. So if that could be considered in any way, I don't know if you could combine that position or not, but we would really appreciate your consideration with that. Also with the counseling, if you would please consider looking at the numbers and data that Ms. Webb presented to you, we certainly could use another position there or a halftime that is here every day, that maybe is split somewhere else or that type of thing. But her numbers continue to grow, we know, with all the needs that students are facing emotionally and socially, you know, and she definitely goes above and beyond and does an amazing job. The East Playground over here, it's still having some draining issues, we've talked about that, they've looked at it. The city came up, they said, you know, they might be able to help with it as well. They did come and look and he felt like the tube or the drain was maybe too small for the load that's coming out, so he thought that maybe a larger drain size would help with that. But it stays covering half, almost half of that playground when it rains heavily. And then if it's cold, it freezes. And I know the county has worked diligently over the years since we've been here in CK to, in the new building, to get that cleared up and drained, but we, it is still an issue and affecting, you know, them getting to go out for recess and we all know that kids need recess and they're also part of our PE minutes. This is something I want to talk to you just a minute about. I'm asking if you could please consider letting us pay overtime on the first day a substitute is absent due to the amount of rooms that are assigned to each custodian in our school and considering the large area and the large amount of bodies. I mean, almost all of our rooms have twenty to twenty-eight students. It often becomes a major issue affecting, you know, teacher, affecting their day when we can't have a substitute, or not a substitute, there's often not a substitute, but to pay overtime for our guys or gals here. We gave you a copy of how many rooms that they all have. So if peak, the person at peak back here is not here and we don't, we can't pay somebody three hours overtime on the first day, there's two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve rooms that do not get clean. And it kind of really affects the teacher as well. So it's that important that I put it on here and I just ask that you look at that and reconsider that. I don't know if it's something you have to do for the whole county, but we have a large amount of students that make, you know, more mess than, you know, just a small amount of students. And when one person is out, it's quite a bit of area that is not covered. And most of those rooms, on the first page, have a bathroom. So yellow has ten rooms and ten bathrooms. So that's, that's what's being missed if we can't pay somebody overtime for that. So it's a lot and we're a large school and you wouldn't believe how it affects morale in the classroom with the teacher when it's not clean. So that would probably, if I had to mark anything on there, that might be close to the top. But again, I want to thank you for always supporting us. They fixed the lights this week and a lot of our plumbing that needed done, anything else that they've been.
They've been working on the air.
They've been working on our air, we've had some issues with that, so I want to thank you for getting them down here and providing all the services. We appreciate everything you all do for us and those are really the only big concerns that we had that we'd like for you to consider.
How is the, how is Carnegie going, the math curriculum?
Carnegie's, we have actually, Danell is coming tomorrow and the guy is coming next week, so everything's going well with that. We've had lots of support with that. I feel like our scores are showing that it's, you know, working, doing its job. We do have some areas that still need some support. You know, teachers, of course, I have, as principal, always given them the freedom to teach their standards and pull in supplemental curriculums. So we still have some areas where, you know, teachers feel like, you know, okay, I still need to bring in some other things to, you know, meet all the standards, but third, fourth and fifth, they're not using anything else. K-2, we're still providing some support there and bringing in a few things as they're still learning the program and navigating. Some of the support we have to provide is, you know, navigation through the program and learning that. So we're still working on some of that, but the validity at third, fourth and fifth, most teachers love it, we've seen in our test scores.
I just want to say, as a special education teacher, I use it and I love it because it's, my kids are not at a same pace, but they are still getting the standards, they're still getting what, you know, general education students are getting. I, I love it. I think my math has gone above since what I was using last year.
And that's one thing we saw with our fourth grade.
I walked in and saw a group of teachers, I was, and they didn't even see me, and I walked in, you had a veteran teacher and a new teacher and they were going through a lesson and watched them bounce off each other and see how it was going to play out. And they were just, they loved to do that. They said they do it every day during planning just to make sure and see how it's going to go. They really embraced it, they really did.
And one thing that I think we saw with growth with our fourth grade co-teaching group, it was unbelievable. We don't usually see that with a co-teaching group and the growth in that math class was unbelievable. So that's where we've seen a lot of difference as well is with the special ed students. They're getting it, they're able to follow it and do well with it, so.
And your ECATs have been expanded to second grade. And I know we've talked a lot about intervention needs.
Right.
Were we seeing any success with the ECATs in the room being able to provide?
Yeah, all of, they often, you know, they'll go in and we can do our walkthroughs, they're leading small group, they're pulling students under the direction of teachers. Of course, that's not the same as a teacher presenting that, but they are all, we are very blessed with our ECATs who've got the positions, but, you know, they are all working, doing small group, pulling out, trying to meet that need with things, but often they need to do, you know, a group and reteach and that type of thing. But our need is so large. But our need is so large here, it just can't be met by ECATs during instructional day.
And then your state benchmark data is really good. I was looking at the district this morning, and, you know, I know we've got a data meeting coming up, but it was impressive. So, you know, give everybody a pat on the back because, yeah, the work that's being done is obvious. And then the chronic absence rate, again, we're not all the way through our data meetings, but that's the lowest I've seen so far.
I know.
Yeah. So some very positive things.
With your ECATs, are they going through your CLDs as well as your teacher? So we're including them in that.
Yes, everybody we care about, which is expected, you know. They attend our PLCs, and sometimes kindergarten will attend the PLCs as well, but one, two, all of those.
As much as we can utilize them.
Oh, yeah, and we are. And like I said, we're very fortunate that we have strong ECATs because we, they're able to do that. You know, some need more support than others, but I can say that we've got a strong group, so we're hoping that happens with third grade as well.
I know all the ECATs, for kids that are in SAT, that are, you know, small group instruction or one-on-one instruction is included in their SAT plan, and I know a lot of the ECATs are doing a lot of that.
Yeah, they're learning as well, though, and I feel strongly that next year, they'll even do better, so.
Right, good. Anything else?
Any other questions, comments?
Ask you guys here. Go on.
Thank you.
Just hitting it out of the park, we appreciate all the hard work.
We had a lot of hard work up here, at least I do, I appreciate each and every one of them, so. Please get your drink or something before you go.
Now, I'll follow up with you on your list.
Okay.
Okay, give me a week or two.
I think I'll leave with you Thursday, so first data.
Okay. Okay, if we want to recess.
I'm sorry.
Everybody in favor?
And it's 5:06 PM. For those that have joined us online, we're going to end this stream now, travel to CK Middle, and we will start a new stream at CK Middle.